You guys are live.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Grove and Board of Selectmen meeting. If you would show me the courtesy to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I am Kathleen Castrenellis, Kathy. To my left is our Town Administrator, Rebecca Oldham. To my right is Jason Neves, Mark Parento, and Ed Watson. We are the Board of Selectmen. Tonight's agenda starts with a public comment. I have not been informed that there is anyone asking to make a public comment, and so we will move on to our first discussion and possible vote, the Sunset Circle parking restrictions. And I believe, I don't see our Highway Superintendent present, Rennie Carroll. Is he going to attend? Let me just pause for a minute, wait to see. I thought he would come to the meeting as well. Thanks for coming in. How are you? This is Rennie Carroll. He's our Highway Superintendent, and we're revisiting the Sunset Circle parking restriction. I think all of us in this room understand where we are on it, but for those that are watching, initially, the residents of Sunset Circle brought to us a concern that their road was very narrow and that when people used Sunset Circle to park on both sides of the road, at the front of the road, because they were visiting people on Salem Street, the road would become so narrow that it was difficult to navigate and might be difficult for emergency vehicles to come through as well. Valid concern because it is a very narrow roadway. I think everyone who reviewed it, Highway Superintendent and our Police Chief, agreed that the road was narrow at the entrance to Salem Street. And Salem Street, for those of you who are not aware of it, is posted as no parking on both sides of the whole length of Salem Street. So if you are going to an event or someone's home on Salem Street, you do have to find parking on a side street nearby. So that's what started this process, is the concerns of the neighborhood brought to the Highway Superintendent, as well as the Police Chief, and all agreed that something needed to be done. And then we had a meeting, and we met with Steve Baker, who's here tonight. I think you were the only one to hear that night, or were there others? Yes. And at that meeting, our Town Administrator informed us that we couldn't just vote something. We had to publicly post for a hearing in order to restrict parking on the street. Had to be put into a newspaper, posted, and that we would have to post the hearing and that the public weigh in if they so wished. And we did that process. And the Board of Selectmen heard, again, the concerns of the residents and voted to restrict the parking on the side that the residents had asked to have restricted. At that time, the Highway Superintendent then went to put into action the parking restrictions and, looking at the roadway, determined to put the signs on the other side because of the sidewalk being on that side. So that's what brings us back here tonight, that our vote was to put them on the opposing side. And the Highway Superintendent thought they should be on the side of the sidewalk, not realizing that we had voted very specifically the other side. So it's a new process, I think, for all of us. I don't think I've ever seen this kind of a vote and posting for a side street before, but I understand why it's so. So perhaps we can hear from the Highway Superintendent about what his concerns are, and then we can hear from the Sunset Circle residents, whoever would like to speak. All I'll ask is that you state your name and address and tell us what your concern is. Okay? So, Mr. Carroll, you're up first.
So, yes. After all of the hoops that we jumped through, we had discussion in length. Once again, I think when the Chair made the motion for it to be on the westerly side, I did not register that. I know that we had talked several times about the process, but it was the motion that was made on the westerly side. Again, when I went to look at the Sunset Drive in nature, I just took professional opinion, the guidelines that you follow in traffic safety, and I applied them to the road. That's basis all I did. I talked to the Police Chief. I think either the day before or the day of, I consulted with him on what he thought. He concurred with me. That's where I put him. So I, you know, we've talked about it a few times. That's my basis of why it was done that way, and that's about all I have.
Okay. And somebody from the streets would like to speak as well? One or more can speak. It's fine. Thank you.
Steve Baker, 5 Sunset Circle. So I think the concern that we have at this point is that, or that I have, I don't want to speak for everybody else, they can certainly speak for themselves, but I think the concern we have at this point is that, you know, we came to you guys with a problem and a potential solution, right? We suggested the right side or the westerly side of the street. There was a public hearing. Everybody agreed. Anyone that had a concern could have raised it at that public hearing. Anybody that had a concern could have raised it in the two-plus months that went by between when you voted and when the signs were put in. That didn't happen, right? Nobody communicated with us. Nobody communicated with you, I don't think. At any point in time, I think the Highway Department could have went to you or to the Town Administrator and said, "Hey, this needs to change." That didn't happen. So the whole coming back after the fact and kind of asking for forgiveness doesn't sit really well with me. I think if this was something that you, as a town, were trying to do, and you had a public hearing, and people didn't participate and then had an objection, you would say, "Hey, you had a chance to participate. You could have taken part in the process. You chose not to." And they would have to deal with it. I'm not sure why this is any different unless you're saying that public employees can do what they want, town employees can do what they want, and the residents don't have to.
Okay. I would just caution you on remarks. I think town employees do their jobs every day. So what we're trying to hear is concerns from the residents as to why you want them on one side versus the other side. That would be helpful.
Yep. So I think that, from our perspective, you know, when you're coming out of the street, it's a lot easier if there's not cars parked on that side. You're also, and again, I'll let other folks speak to it, but, you know, the signs are facing directly towards people's windows. I've never seen signs installed that way on that side of the street. You're blocking people, they're potentially my neighbors' mailboxes, their trash pickup. You're blocking an electrical box that services the whole neighborhood. If you're allowing people to park on that side of the street, it just doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
My name is Denise Bragaloni. I live at 2 Sunset Circle. So the signs that are there now are facing our house, and I just don't see really the importance of that because even when you pull onto our street, you're not going to even see the signs when you pull onto the street. And like Steve said, we need to be able to get out of our street on the right-hand side, and also, we need to be able to have emergency vehicles come in as well. There was just a party not long ago, and both sides of our street was just, it was completely full. There was really no way for any emergency vehicle to come in due to a party on Salem Street.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment or inform?
My name is Mary Ann Casole. I live at 4 Sunset. And I just agree with the two, with Denise and what Steve said.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And from the board, Ed, did you have any questions or concerns?
Not yet.
Mark?
So just, I understand how you say the signs are running parallel to the road. So if, could we make a compromise if you put a sign on the front and the back of the pole so you would see it perpendicular? Would that make it visually acceptable for you? I mean, because I'm just, I'm just trying to think, try to solve this and get this over with, because, uh...
You mean like on the street? So there's a street post?
Instead of having the sign like this with the road, put one this, put it this way. So that way, when you pull in, you see it, and put one on the other side. That way, you can see it. If you're parked there, you can get out and look at it and say, "Oh, crap. I got to move." No, I'm not going to argue with the Highway Super and the Police Chief. They're public safety. I mean, they know what they're doing. So they're going to have to be on that side if that's what they suggest.
Can I just ask, can I just talk?
Well, just let Mark finish. Okay.
But I'm just saying, I mean, we could just, just trying to find like a simple resolution to fix this and get this over with.
Okay. And Jason, did you have any comments or concerns at this moment?
Well, the only thing I would like to say is I agree with Steve in terms of how it was handled. It was handled properly because it was a public hearing, and it should have come back before us. Had it come back before us prior to the signs going up, I think we could have made those changes at an additional public hearing, which I still think we need to have another public hearing to make those changes. But we're all human. We didn't have all the information. The manual and uniform traffic control devices, the MUTCD, is what dictates those type of situations, what side of the street the signs need to go on, and where they're spaced, how they're positioned. And those are all things that the Highway Department typically follows. So given that we had voted on the improper side of that street, he shouldn't have put up any signs until he went back for clarification. I agree with that 100 percent. But this is where we're at now, and I think we really should have an additional hearing so we can take our vote back and rewrote it, revote it properly at a public hearing.
Okay. So myself personally, I did look into the regulations that the Highway Superintendent had sent to us. I did see that the signs are supposed to be angled at 30 degrees or 45 degrees, so they're not supposed to be flat, flush. And I think it's also recommended that they be two-sided so that you can see it on both sides. And I also noted the signs, one sign says no parking, then the sign in the middle says no parking between signs, and the sign at the end says no parking. And I think that some arrows that point where the no parking area for someone like me, directionally challenged, would be helpful. And honestly, I sympathize with, you know, what you're dealing with. I mean, obviously, it's a small town. People have friends over. There's only some roads in town where there's no parking on either side, and Salem Street is one of those, for good reason. So anybody that lives on Salem Street has really limited availability to put people's cars somewhere. So the side streets have always probably served that purpose. I went and looked at your street and took some pictures to look at them some more. And I guess what concerns me is if your street was like a thoroughfare, you know, where cars were coming through, I could understand the necessity to park by the sidewalk, you know, because you don't want people getting out into a road where there's traffic. But there's, what is it, three houses on your street? It's a dead end? Four? I don't know. So the traffic flow is not as big a concern as, to me, as how you feel about the parking and whether your safety, as far as emergency vehicles being able to get to you, you know, hopefully that would never happen, but we all know that things we say never happen sometimes do happen. And I would want residents in our town to be able to have access to the emergency services when needed. So that being said, when I look at the side that would allow the parking, that is a side that a resident has a home on, a mailbox, and a driveway, and I feel that, yes, we could have another hearing, but I'll be honest, I'll speak at the hearing and say, I feel personally that we'll probably get more complaints when people infringe on that driveway because they don't understand that you can't park within a certain distance of a person's driveway. You can't, and then blocking the mailbox, and I think we're just going to create another problem, is my concern. We're going to create another problem, would be my bigger concern. And then the police are going to get the calls on that. I did speak with the Police Chief about where he is on this, and his words to me were that there's pros and cons on both sides. And that's kind of where I see it, too. There's, you know, the pros, that, yeah, if it's at all possible, you want people to park by a sidewalk. So when they get out of the car, they're getting out onto the sidewalk. The con, unfortunately, in your street, parking on that side is going to infringe on one neighbor in particular a lot and possibly cause a complaint to happen. So I just, I was hoping that we could reach some kind of a mutual accord. I spoke with our Town Administrator about whether or not Merrimack Valley Plining could send somebody in, and unfortunately, they don't do that kind of work, and a third party come in and say this is where they should be. A part of me wonders, you know, do we need to bring in an engineer to figure this out? Can we take a little more time and work out something that would be mutually acceptable to the neighborhood and to our Highway Superintendent? I understand right now the signs are not on the side that we voted. Okay? So if that were to stay, we'd have to do another hearing, another posting, another But if we stay with the original decision and reach mutual agreement on where the signs could be and how much parking, you know, could be allowed, I think that would be beneficial to everybody. So my thought is personally to see if it can be worked out without another hearing. I don't know if that's possible, but I would like to see that happen. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. I think, Mark, you echo the same thing, because let's try and work this out. I mean, the way it is now, it's not tenable because the signs aren't put incorrectly anyway. They're not angled. I think it's, again, to me, it's confusing about where you can or can't park. So I'd like to see that addressed, but more importantly, I just would like to see that, and this is something the board can work on with our Town Administrator and with our Highway Superintendent, to make sure our communication lines are better. I apologize for this, you know, miscommunication, that you came to us, you followed the steps. We did what we thought we were supposed to do, and then the Highway Superintendent saw things in a different light. And as he said, you know, he wasn't aware at that meeting how specific our vote was. So these things happen. You're the first case of this coming through, so you're the, you're setting the trend here. I mean, if you insist upon it, we will go forward and post another hearing and go through all that process again. Or if you think that you could meet with the Highway Superintendent and talk about it and work something out, that would be mutually acceptable. It's, we're trying to help your neighborhood, and we're doing the best we can. Yes? Could you, do you mind using the microphone? I'm sorry. It's just that they don't, on television, they won't hear you.
Where the signs are, can we just turn them so that they face, like when people come in Salem Street, they will see it instead of having a flush?
Yes, it's, Mr.?
Yes.
Yeah. They can be turned, yes. Would that be something you want to talk about amongst yourselves, and that would be okay? But then we'd still have to go back through the hearing vote, am I right? Rebecca, we still would have to repost and do all that. Okay. But again, we're trying to work things out so that you're happy with us and with the If you want to take some time and think about it, let us know. That's fine. It's really up to, you know, is that your discretion? Yes.
The only thing that I would caution is, since the manual and uniform traffic control devices sets the standard, that's a standard of safety. And once we go against that...
I did not see a standard on this type of road, though.
So in all, were the, in terms of parking placing? I just pulled it up, and it's because when people pull off of the street, they pull into that street.
Yes.
And typically, that's where there's no parking, is where they pull into.
There is no parking for the first 20 feet on both sides?
Right.
Okay. So that kind of handles that?
No, not really, because 20 feet doesn't cover that distance.
So you're saying it's because of the egress into the street, and that's something you didn't bring up in the hearing either?
I didn't, I wasn't aware of it until I was brought attention to the MUTCD.
I didn't...
And those guidelines is what I believe Rennie based his decision to put the seeds on those.
Right. I went to the guidelines. I didn't see that. Did you see a guideline that said that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Maybe you could send that to me. I'd like to see it. I didn't see, I went through a lot of different ones. I saw the sign tilting thing and the arrows, and I think that that could be made a little more definitive where the no parking actually is, you know, because otherwise, I don't think we can enforce that. If people can say, "I'm not sure where it is or isn't," we can't enforce that. So would the board like to pause on this at this time and let the neighborhood kind of talk about it, maybe meet with our Highway Superintendent, and then decide if we're going to go? Yes, Ed?
Look, we've kicked this can down the road, and we should take a vote to keep the signage the way it's posted.
We can't do that, Ed. We have to go through the whole hearing.
Well, then schedule another public hearing.
Well, that's what I'm telling you. We can...
Because once you, once you go against the MUTCD guidelines, which are uniform throughout the country, and...
Well, yes, just, if you could just show me the guideline, show me the guideline you're referring to. That's all I'm asking for. I went through them. I looked for it. I didn't see it, that's all. Show me the guideline that says, it has to be on this side.
I think that once you go against the guidelines...
Yes.
You open yourself up to a liability. If there's a, if somebody gets hit, if there's a motor vehicle crash up there, and you go against the recommendations, and if you read the recommendations, they regulate the size of the signs, what the signs say on them, how high they're supposed to be.
Yes, they do. And which way they're tilted, too. So, okay, so it sounds like, is the general consensus of the board that we're going to go forward to another hearing?
Well, I think Rennie wanted to say something. I just...
Okay. Because that's where we seem to be heading.
So I will say, the MUTCD guidelines that we're talking about...
Yes.
These are guidelines that are, they're regularly used by traffic engineers. So a traffic engineer, if this road had never been constructed, would come up and make assessments on where signage should go.
Yes.
So coming off of Salem Street, which is a heavily trafficked, I believe, 40 mile-an-hour road...
Right.
If at all possible, and you were putting no parking signs on one side, the common practice would be to leave that inbound side free of parking. That would be a common practice from a traffic engineer's standpoint, and put the parking on the opposite side.
I understand.
People coming out of the street obviously would have to yield to incoming traffic, but I think the person coming off of Salem Street traveling at a higher rate of speed, say, in excess of 30 miles an hour, would need a little more room to do so safely.
So then what is the protection for that home as far as their driveway and mail being blocked by the parking?
So on the side where the parking would be allowed, there are no driveways on that side.
Yes, there are.
There's sidewalk, but there's no, there's no driveways that I...
Do you want to see the pictures? Oh, yeah, definitely.
So who's driving?
One home.
On, on...
Yeah, unfortunately.
On Sunset Drive, you're saying?
Yes.
So further down towards the cul-de-sac area?
Right there.
The signs are facing our house. Yeah, and the one that says, um...
Yeah.
Okay.
Between signs is near her driveway.
On the side where the no parking is?
On the other side.
They're across from it.
Oh, on the other side. Yes, yes. Okay. I thought you were saying on the no parking side, there was a driveway. There's no driveways on that side. Yeah, they should be tipped at 33-degree angle, yes.
Okay.
Which we can easily do.
We can do that and...
Yes.
And make that amenable?
Very easily done, yes.
And if this is acceptable to the neighborhood, I guess, I mean, I'm just be concerned for that one house that hopefully people would be respectful of their driveway and mailbox.
And I'm sure if there is parking on one side and they impede that, the, you know, the police can enforce, you know, the proper ticketing. If someone's driveway is blocked, that's something they'll have to address. If this is a bigger, and I will be honest, when I went down there, it was obviously summertime. They did have a pretty large gathering, and there were an excessive amount of cars on the road. I think there was six or seven cars on that road at the time.
Oh, really?
So it was, you know, it was a somewhat dangerous situation at the time. So I can, you know, I'm guessing that if it continues, that, you know, if the cars are parked in people's driveway, it'll be an ongoing issue that will have to be addressed further.
Is there a regulation as far as how close to the driveway those cars can park?
Unfortunately, there really isn't. I mean, there's a courtesy that...
Are you sure there's not?
You know, you're supposed to leave four or five feet, you know, for someone to get out of the driveway, but there's no real regulation for it.
There's nothing? I'm surprised.
There's no bylaw, there's no...
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
As far as the, as far as the sign layout, that can be changed very easily. And then, you know, if there are any problems with people parking in people's driveways, that's, you know, that's something enforcement will have to, will have to handle.
So it sounds like we're going to have to go and post and do another hearing because right now the vote is the other way. Yeah. Okay. So would you like to make that motion, Ed?
Yeah, motion for another public hearing to, on Sunset Circle, for parking issues.
I'll second that.
Yes. Any more discussion, residents? Okay, all in favor? Do we have to vote a date? Or will you inform us? Because there's a certain amount of time that has to pass.
No. According to the memo that was received by me, Talman Costa, it just needed to be noticed on an agenda 48 hours prior to a meeting, no different than any other agenda item.
What about the newspaper? Do we have to...
The newspaper needs to be posted at least a week prior to the regulations, and it just needs to be specifically stated what the regulation is so that when somebody were to look, they're very clear, so enforcement could be very direct as to where they are and what is being regulated.
Okay. So we could have this on our next agenda?
That's correct.
Okay. So we will have this on our next agenda, and if there's anything else that comes to your mind between now and then, there'll be public comment during the hearing again? Okay. I'm sorry that we got it so confused, but we'll be listening. Thank you. Okay. All in favor? We did that, right?
We did that.
Good. I thought so. Okay. Next on our agenda is the road pavement management plan. Let's see. I asked for this just because we had reviewed it. It's fairly comprehensive, but I noted that we didn't vote to accept it. And I feel like we just keep looking at things and then pushing them away, and I feel that we should vote to accept it, and then when our Highway Superintendent works with them and updates it, he'll bring forward update, we'll accept it. It's a fluid plan, but there should be something that we'd vote and say, "Yes, we'd like to see this done." So we all had it in the prior packet. Unless you have questions or concerns about it, I think vote to accept it, and when it gets updated, the Highway Superintendent can come in and walk us through the updates. I don't think it's an issue at all at this point.
So I'll make a motion to accept the road paving plan, including the cemetery, which was presented to us... was presented to us from the highway department, and we'll expect to see it dates as they come.
Okay.
Second that.
You second it? Any discussion?
No.
There being none? All in favor?
No.
Done. Next is a discussion on water quality concerns, and we have our superintendent of the water and sewer department, Colin Stokes, present. And Selakma Watson, you asked for this agenda item, so would you like to go first?
Thanks for coming in, Colin. I'm still getting complaints from people on the water that...and this was prior to you really doing the flushing. And it doesn't seem to be getting any better.
No, it's not going to get better by itself. It never was. You know, we just kind of talked about kicking things down the road, and that's been happening for decades with the water system. It's funny that you called me in here to talk about this. At our last couple of water meetings, we're going to be rolling out a new capital improvement fee on everyone's water bill so that we can do water main projects every summer. So you got that coming towards you. We're going to be looking at, when some regulations change within the next year or two, we're probably going to be mandated by the federal government to build a water treatment facility. So we've got that to look forward to as well.
Full time?
Yep.
And they'll have funding?
Probably not for us. They haven't released any of that information yet, but given our demographics here and our levels of minerals and, you know, different contaminants, if they base it on how bad your levels are, we're nowhere near what other people have. But again, they haven't released how they're going to score that and/or what funding they're going to make available. So, you know, I've lived here a long time, too, and, you know, worked here for about 10 years now. This is not a new problem by any means. But it's a common consensus that no one wants to pay for it. But within the next couple of years, we're not going to have an option of paying for it or not. It's you have to build it, and if they don't give us any money, then the money has to come from us. So we can either sit around and wait for that to happen, which is probably not the best idea. But so that's, I mean, that's in the small, short and concise version, is we're going to start doing water main projects. The goal is to collect 5% of our total assets. So you figure out a 5% depreciation of your assets, and our assets are about a little over $8 million. So that equates to about $430,000 a year. It should really be about a half a million dollars a year. If we spent a half a million dollars, it would take us about 20 years to replace everything that we should be replacing. And that was suggested on our rate study in, I think it was 2016, and it hadn't happened yet. So we're starting it now. And, you know, the goal is to do a project every year, but, you know, if a project costs, say, a million dollars, and it takes us two years to collect that million dollars, well then we'll skip a year, you know, and do a big project the next year. But to continually bond for things, which is what we've historically done, we're just continually raising the rates, and it's percentage-based at that point, with a flat fee. You'll know, all right, well, no matter how much water I use, that will change because it's tiered pricing. But everyone's going to pay the same amount for all the new infrastructure fee, infrastructure that we're putting in. Looking down the road, once the regulations come out that we have to build a plant, we'll figure that out. We're not there yet, but we're working on it. We're working on drilling a new well. But yeah, we're not contrary to what some people might think. We're not just sitting around doing nothing. We've been working on finding a new water source for three years now. We've drilled in about nine different places throughout town, found varying levels of worse water than what we already have, more contaminants than what we already have, no water with wedge. We've found two promising areas that we can get good volume of water out of, and we're just kind of working through that process now. But, you know, nothing happens overnight, especially with multiple government agencies involved in permitting and even just, not even just getting a permit to do it, but getting their opinion on where they want us to try to drill a hole so that they think they might approve it at the end. So we're working on it. The dirty water, I mean, we have, it's a combination of, we're pulling minerals. Every time we turn that well on, there's minerals coming out of the ground. They go out into the system, they drop out into the pipes, and they collect. So anytime the water flow changes, it stirs up the minerals. Another point that I want to get across, that I tell people a lot, is it's not something negligent that we're doing. It's the minerals are coming out of the ground. So if we turn the well on, you're getting the minerals. It's not a, you know, my guys aren't not doing something or doing something on purpose. It's just what it is. The well's on, you're getting minerals. So the option is turn the well on or don't turn the well on. And our water quality has been pretty consistent. I had about 20 years' worth of data just in my desk, and the, all of our results have been the same for 20 years. And that's just what I had within arm's reach. So it's been a long time coming, and, you know, had something been done before, maybe it would have been a little bit cheaper, but it didn't happen, so now we have to go pick it up from here. And, you know, there's only, we have just under 2,000 water customers, so all of these expenses go to those 2,000 people, because not everyone in town has water. You know, Rebecca's pretty good at working with everyone in town to get any grants that might apply to them. We're exploring all options. But again, contrary to popular belief, they don't just have grants sitting out there for anything you might want to use them for. They're very specific for what you can apply for and what they can be applied to. So we're trying, you know. I pay a water bill, too, and I don't want it to go up any more than it has to, but unfortunately, that was kind of the mentality for a long time here, and now it's biting us in the butt because we had to pay for all, you know, in a pretty short amount of time. So...
Well, explain the, how it makes sense to start changing the pipes if the problem is in the well. It seems to me that you would put a filtration system in and then start changing the pipes.
So you need to do both. I mean, we have water pipes that are about, in certain areas of town, they're 100 years old. That's well past anything's life expectancy. So, you know, depending on who you ask around here, their opinion, some people will say, "Oh, the wells are fine, it's the pipes' problem." Some people will tell you the opposite. To be honest with you, it's both. You know, we, Balch Ave, those pipes on Balch Ave are, I believe, from like the late 20s.
Are those, is that a wooden main out there?
No, it's an unlined cast iron pipe. It's no good. You know, there's, across from your house on Land and Ave, that pipe, same thing. It's a four-inch, non-lined, cast iron pipe. I don't know the age of it off the top of my head, but it's old. We just need to start replacing stuff. You know, with an unlined pipe, the minerals collect on the pipe itself and the rust forms because there's no cement lining on the inside of it. It's just not a good combination of stuff. You know, and there are parts of town where there's, the pipes are less than 20 years old, and in the water industry, that's new. Under 20 years is new.
It's costing, it's costing the people in the water system. It's costing them some money. They have a filtration system that they, some sort, where they've got to change the filters, and some of these, the filters are recommended that they be changed every year, but they're changing them three times a year. So, and that gets expensive. When you've got to go, nobody wants to drink water out of the faucet that looks like iced coffee. So the people are going across the bridge and buying bottled water, even though, you may say that...now, let me ask you a question. Why didn't you fill that up with Groveland water?
Because my metal cups are in the backseat of my truck dirty, so it wasn't really an option.
But, so it's costing them, they've got to buy bottled water because they're not going to drink, they're not going to drink the iced coffee, put those in a container like that. When they do a white load of wash, they, sometimes they have to do it twice, maybe three times, depending upon what the water looks like, then people have to clean their toilet because it, instead of doing it once a year. Same thing with the hot water heater. And I'm surprised that you haven't mentioned about, people should be cleaning out their water heater probably twice a year. It used to be recommended every year, but it should be done with this, all the sediment in the water. They should be doing that twice a year for the senior citizens that are unable to do that. They've got to get a plumber or somebody in to do that, and that costs money.
Yep.
And there's no reimbursement from the water department.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, a lot of people ask about that, but, so we, you know, hypothetically, we reimburse you, right? We're then going to have to turn around and charge you more money to raise that money to give back to you. We only get our money from the rates. So we can give it back to you, but we're going to, you know, it's a cycle. It's a circle. So we'll give you the $50 to do something, but then we're going to have to turn around and charge you, you know, $1,250 more a bill to get that back, to give it back to you. So it doesn't make any sense to do that.
All right, I think, yes, go ahead, Mark.
And your rates are for unfiltered water.
Right.
So if we build a filtration plant, the rate's going to go through the roof anyways.
Yeah, and I have this conversation with residents quite a bit. When you buy a filter that says it's good for a certain amount of time, there's a 0% chance that the guy who wrote that label knows where that filter's going and what kind of water it's taking in. So you could take that filter and put it in Boston that has MWRA water, which goes through a filtration plant, and yeah, it's going to last a year. You bring it out here to Groveland where you're getting zero filtration before it comes into your house, and obviously, it's going to filter out more stuff and not last as At the same time, if I put a filter in my house and it wasn't doing anything, personally, I'd be mad because I spent money to put a filter in that I didn't need. So, yes, I agree that people have complaints and issues with discolored water, so they put a filter in. But then to put a filter in and then complain that you have to change it, it doesn't make any sense to me. I have filter in my house, I change it once a quarter, I throw it out. I've tried a million different types of filters. They make a filter. If you want to remove the chlorine, you buy the more expensive one. If you just want to remove the particulates and the minerals, then you buy the $10 one. It's, you know, personal preference. Some people are more sensitive to chlorine, which we don't add a whole lot of it to begin with, but, you know, everybody's different, so you can buy a filter to suit your needs. And not everyone has a filter, and not everyone has, you know, the problems that someone three houses down the street has.
So, call...
Let me just ask you another question.
Selakma Watson, wait, excuse me. Jason hasn't spoken. You've had the floor for most of the time. Go ahead.
The one thing I want to reiterate is what you said about in terms of the money. No taxes is going to be paid for any of this because it all comes from the water bill, from the people that actually use the water. The other is, I know last time that we spoke, we were looking at roughly $1,800 per household per year for the filtration system adjustment rates. And that was a while ago. Things are always going to be changing because it's always in motion. So I felt at that time, and I still feel that it behooves a lot of people to get their own personal filtration system. I know I've recommended it to a couple of different families that have done it and had great success with it. I remember also the city of Drakett, they had a problem when they had to shut down one of the wells, and because they were pulling more water from the other well, even though they had a filtration system, they were getting a lot of complaints about brown water as a result, because the more water you pull from a particular well, you get more minerals. Just seems to be what happens. Situate also has a water treatment plant, and they have for a very long time. They still have a tremendous amount of complaints about brown water, and it's not the pipes. And went as far as to scour the pipes with ice at an exorbitant cost, and it got zero results in reducing the amount of brown water. The same with Bill Ricker, who recently, I was on their town website, who actually posts the explanation of why there's brown water on their website, and they just replaced their water filtration system in 2006. So I don't think the pipes or a water filtration system is going to eliminate it. Might make it less bad in some areas. The old pipes, I think the biggest problem that I read up about old pipes, 100-year-old cast iron pipes, is when they begin to leak, they don't necessarily leak out, they leak in, and that pulls in dirt.
Yeah, I mean, in an ideal world, the system's always pressurized, so it's when, say, the pipe was cracked or you had a leak, and then you shut the pipe down and you drain the pipe, that's when it can pull stuff in.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean...
I mean, I know we're still going to end up with a water treatment plant just because of the new PFAS requirements, which both I find relieving and terrifying because they're making it better than what it was, but it was okay back then, why not now?
Yeah, so...
I haven't, I haven't drank city water since I was in Florida, and the water smelled like rotten eggs because of the amount of sulfur in it. In California, they have so much bromide in the water that it's cancer-causing. And since I lived in both those places, I haven't drank.
Yeah, so the regulations that I was talking about that are going to make us build this treatment plant has nothing to do with the discoloration of water. It's PFAS, which is, you know, the forever chemical that is the target of the regulations right now. But in order to treat for the PFAS, you have to remove the iron and manganese, or it clogs the filtration media that removes the PFAS. And the media is very expensive, so you don't want to be artificially clogging it. So basically, to treat for PFAS, we're going to have to remove the iron and manganese first. So they're forcing you to treat for one thing, and you're treating for two, three things because of it.
So for the hearing now, though, I mean, I know you were doing like more hydrant flushing, more this, more that, more that. For the people, when you get the brown water, you're supposed to run all your faucets for a while? I mean, anything or what?
Yeah, I mean, when people call us, there's a whole process that we go through with people on the phone. And at the end of the day, certain customers aren't comfortable or don't have the physical ability to run around their house and open faucets or tubs or stuff.
Oh, okay.
We'll send out the crew to help them.
So you want them to run everything at once?
No.
Oh, okay. Oosh.
Yeah, in an ideal world, right, if, say, in a flush, hydrant flushing situation...
Yeah.
If we're out in front of your house flushing the hydrant, you know that, or we know and you should know, that there's going to be dirty water.
Right.
Don't use your, don't do anything, because as soon as you introduce that dirty water into your house, now you have to flush it, now you have to flush all the pipes in your house. If you're running laundry when we go by flushing hydrants, and it pulls the dirty water into your hot water heater, you have to clean, you have to cycle that enough times that it empties the dirty water out of your hot water heater.
So if somebody buys like their own filtration system for their house, it's not going to treat for the thing that the federal government is after?
Not unless they buy a very, very expensive system.
Okay.
But no. A simple cartridge filter is not going to do that.
But even the people on wells, like we were on a well when we first moved to town, and something in the water fried our water heater somehow, and we had to get a whole water filtration system, which is expensive, but we had a choice, either fry another water heater.
The people with private wells in Groveland, they're drawing from the same aquifer that we are, so they have all the same problems. we are, so they have all the same problems, it's just on a much smaller scale because they're only feeding one house. We're feeding 2,000 houses.
Right. So, if people put like a filter on their kitchen faucet, will that change the color of the water? Any of these filters work on...
Yeah, I mean, for, for the most part, unless, unless something catastrophic happens, you know, we can't promise you that it's gonna work on it in every situation, but people don't put them in for no reason. You know, it, the one I have works.
Right. So, you have a whole house filtration system?
Yeah. And it's very much, you know, like the most recent bout of complaints over from where, the Center Street, Washington Street, little area. Some people were complaining, other people weren't affected at all. And all within, you know, a two-block area. So, it's...
And what was that due to? Was there an event or anything, you know?
Not that, not that we're aware of. The weeks leading up to flushing, you know, I always say the system is like ripe to be flushed, all the stuff is accumulating in there.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, if two extra people turn on their lawn sprinkler, that could be just enough that you're pulling that much more water and it stirs up the stuff in the pipe. That's, I think, the problem is that most people don't understand that we have no control over that whatsoever. But it is, it's predictable because we flush at the same time every year.
Right.
And two weeks beforehand, this stuff starts happening in the system, and we start getting calls.
Yeah.
But we can't control when people are filling their pool, or watering their lawn. We can't control it just as much as we can't control how much minerals are coming out of the ground.
Right.
It's awful, but, but it is what it is, you know?
Right. And you do track the complaints? You do pay attention to where they're located?
Yep, we have a dirty water log. And, you know, I have, we keep it, we've kept it for as long as I've been here. But unfortunately, there's, and I've set up, there's literally nothing we can do about it. We turn the well on, the minerals are coming out and going into the pipe. There's no way to not do that.
Excuse me.
I'd love for there to be a way for us to do that, that didn't cost an exorbitant amount of money. But, I mean, outside of people putting filters in their houses on their own, which a lot of people do, I don't have any statistics on how many people do and don't. I know that when I was going into people's houses in the field, maybe it was 50% of the houses have them, maybe a little bit less, but, you know, some people don't have the means to do that, or aren't interested, and they'd rather just call and tell us they have dirty water, hopefully that we can fix it. But unfortunately, right now, we can't. So, and that's another thing is, I don't wanna present, like the second we build this plant and we start replacing pipes, the dirty water's not gonna go away overnight because the whole system right now is, has 100 years of minerals built up in it. So, it's out there. And no matter how much we flush the hydrant, you never get a perfect flush, you know, you got 100 years of minerals built up in pipes, so...
So, do you think that people having their home on some kind, their own individual filtration system is gonna become more of a norm?
I mean, if it was me, it would be.
Yeah.
But there are certain rules that if we go out and tell people they have to put in a, a filter for a specific problem, then it becomes our liability. We can't even get people to call us about a bill that we're estimating, so we definitely can't get people to call us to come change their filter in their basement like that. It's just not realistic.
Right.
In your wildest dreams, not realistic. So, it, we, we, even if we wanted to, we couldn't buy a filter for everyone and give it to them. We, we just can't. You know, the people who, some of the people who would be, what I would say, like our highest call volume people, have installed filters, haven't heard from them.
Okay.
Take it upon yourself, yeah, it's, it's a cost upfront, but I'd rather pay it than have to deal with discolored water if that's, if that's what my life was on a daily basis. I would put a filter in, but...
Okay. Do we have any additional questions? I think we've gotten a lot of information. I never knew that it was bad to run the water when you were flushing. I thought that's what you were supposed to...
No, you want us to go by first. Keep your clean water and your pipes. Let us get the dirty slug by, and then start doing what you're doing.
Okay. Yes, Ed?
Colin, you know, and I'm going back, like 30 years ago, or before you got on the job, Groveland was known for having the best water around, and, better than in Haverhill. And then now Haverhill has stepped up, and they're, they're ahead of Groveland. Do you attribute that to the expansion in the houses and the water system? Do you, do you attribute that to the, the additional additives that have to be put into the water? You know, you're adding chlorine. How about fluoride? Is that, is, is any of these additives that you're putting in, are they, are they causing some of this sediment that's on the bottom of the pipes to flow through?
I mean, so the, we get asked about fluoride a fair amount. And we, I did a little research, it was voted in at town meeting by the residents. So, that means for us to not add it anymore, it has to be petitioned and voted at town meeting for us to not add it. Everyone has a different opinion on it, whether they like it or don't. If you don't like it, bring it up at town meeting and get it voted out, and we'll stop adding it. Oddly enough, it's actually regulated by the Board of Health, not the Water Department. But, so we, we add chlorine, chlorine for disinfection, fluoride for dental health, and we raise the pH slightly. Those are the only three things we do. Haverhill, you know, they have a massive treatment plant. So, they're taking a mixture of surface water and groundwater, cleaning it and sending it out. We take groundwater, add chlorine, fluoride, and adjust the pH, and we send it out. I would, don't quote me on this, but I would say our, our sources are naturally cleaner outside of the iron and manganese. If, if we didn't have an iron and manganese issue, we have almost nothing else in our water. Which is, I think, how we kinda got away with not having to filter or treat anything for so long. But, yeah, I mean, I'd say my rough estimate is we're, we're good for like maybe 10 houses a year here in Groveland, outside of, you know, the apartments that are going in, or any major development. We haven't really seen that in quite a while. It's usually, you know, a 10-house subdivision once a year, if that. And it's been steady, I feel like, but, yeah, I mean, things have a life expectancy, and wells are included, so...
Well, I think certainly been very informative. Thank you very much.
And you?
Anybody else? No. I agree, I echo the same sentiment. I think you've given us a much better understanding, and maybe in, in addition to people, that'll be a town meeting, we're gonna have to vote the capital fee through, I suppose.
Yeah, so we're gonna, like any other, oh, and we haven't raised our rates since 2021. I don't know if you've...
That's a good thing.
Exactly. Everything else is, you know, skyrocketed. But anytime we change our rates or this fee that we're talking about, we have to hold a public hearing, post it in the newspaper like you guys have to do for this parking issue. So, there's a whole process, so it's not like a fly-by-night, we're doing it in the dark.
No, absolutely. So, it would not have to get voted at town meeting, you can just do it through your water and sewer commissioners?
Correct.
So, it would be posted, and then people can comment and find out what it's going to do for them?
Yeah, so we're still...
Okay.
We've kinda come to the consensus of we know what we wanna do, we just, we're not gonna just slam you with a, with a big fee all at once. The idea is to kinda phase it in. It won't help us get anything done quickly doing it that way, but it, it'll be, we feel it'll be easier on the, on the residents to kinda know, all right, well, this year, you know, just throwing out numbers, this year it's, or this quarter it's $10, next year, next quarter it's $15. And we'll have a plan, and we're gonna have a list of showing what projects that these fees are gonna fund.
Yeah.
We're not just collecting the money to put it in the bank. Another thing that we, we don't just have like millions of dollars in the bank, we just don't. I wish we did, because we'd be breaking out projects right now.
So, with this kind of a fee, you would seek to address these 100-year-old pipes?
Yeah.
And start getting it more on track?
Mm-hmm.
And prior to this, the funding just wasn't there?
Yeah, prior to this, if we wanna do a project, basically, we either, we save up our retained earnings, and then we, you know, take a large chunk out to fund the project, or we would bond the project, and then pay for it over 20 or 30 years. But it's...
You've kinda reached the end of that plan.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're, we're exploring all options to try to jumpstart things and...
Okay, good.
Make stuff start happening.
But I think we're all set, and thanks for staying late and telling us so much. We appreciate that. All right, we have Board of Selectmen minutes for August 4th, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Discussion of the Board of Selectmen policies, I put that on. If you could just take a minute, I don't know if you had a chance to look through them. The Board of Selectmen policies, the reason I ask for them to be on is they're, they're somewhat outdated and somewhat not being followed by the board. So, I thought if we're going to have policies, we should follow them, right? So, the first one was appointments to boards and committees. I didn't see much that needed to be changed in that one. The only thing I questioned was number three, that anyone who fails to attend 51% of meetings in any six-month period, or three consecutive scheduled meetings, should be considered to have resigned, and we'll appoint a successor. I don't know that we have the authority to do that. I think we'd have to remove the person to appoint a successor. So, and I also don't think we track how often anybody misses meetings on other boards. I didn't know if that was a paragraph that could be eliminated. And again, we can just speak about this in draft form for now, and then bring it to another meeting to solidify it, but I just didn't, I don't, I don't personally look at the attendance at other boards. And three consecutive scheduled meetings, I, I don't think that means someone's resigned. So, I didn't know if we wanted to consider removing that. This is on the one for appointments to boards and committees. And if you had any other suggestions on that, you can voice them now.
I mean, most people that stop going to the meetings usually resign on their own, don't they?
Yes. So, kinda take us out of the authority of firing people from our, from our volunteer boards. Sort of wanted to not have to fire people unless we have cause. Ed, do you have any comment on that?
Well, on number three, as far as with the last few years with using remote meetings, somebody's got an extended illness or injury, and they're not able to go, they were, they could, they could dial in remotely and participate in the meeting. So, I, I don't, I don't see that that's, that's a problem, that...
Well, the question is, do we want this as a policy, which would mean we'd have to monitor the attendance? It puts it on us.
Why not?
But we don't monitor the attendance.
Why not, why not? What's the harm in keeping it?
Well, we don't follow it. I mean, to me, if you have a policy, you're either gonna follow it or not have it. We're not following this, we don't...
Well, I agree. Give me, give me a couple of examples where it hasn't been followed.
We don't track the attendance on any of the committees that we appoint. So, we have no idea if someone missed three consecutive meetings. I have no idea. Do you know of anybody that missed three consecutive meetings?
Not offhand, I'm sure there is.
Do I know that everyone we appointed has attended 51% of the meetings? I don't know that. I just, my sense is, I think, that people who volunteer do it in the best intentions. And I think, as Mark said, usually if things change in their life and they can't make it, they typically resign on their own. I don't see the need for us to, it just seems like a punitive policy that could be used here and there when someone wants to. That would be my concern. It would be used here and there, and not universally. And if you're not gonna monitor the attendance, then why would you have it? Because you want to be able to do it now and then? I don't...
You know, we have a, we have a problem finding people to volunteer for different committees and boards.
Right.
And if you, if you're restricting them for, maybe they have a change in their lifestyle, and they're not able to make three meetings in a row, and, but yet, they're still interested. So, I think you're kind of...
Well, no, I think what you're saying, you're agreeing with me, that we don't wanna remove them just because they've missed three meetings, so...
Keep, keep number three.
But we, if they miss three meetings, do you think they should be removed?
No, I, no, I don't.
Oh, okay.
But I think we should, I, there may be a reason that they're not going to the meeting, and let them, let them appeal it. Just say, geez, I've, I've been sick, the wife has been sick, I haven't been able to make the meeting, but I'm still interested. You shouldn't be just able to, if they don't show up at a meeting, the three consecutive scheduled meetings, a board, committee, or commission shall be considered to have resigned. They can't be considered to be resigned unless they resign themselves.
I agree with you. So, then that should be taken out because that's not true.
All right, we can...
Strike that out.
We can take a look at it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think we should strike that out. It clearly brings it up as a per basis situation. It's not something that we need to monitor or should be monitoring. It's gonna be a result of having a board that doesn't have a quorum and can't get the job done. And that's when the board has to step in and make those type of decisions. And this gives us the ability to do such, because we'll have to remove people to appoint people that are gonna be on the board.
So, we'll have to remove, that's my point, is that they're not considered resigned. We would have to have a meeting and vote to remove them.
Right. And this is what allows us to do it. This presents, this gives us a guideline to do so.
What do you think, Rebecca, does this give us the authority to do it, or does this, this says shall be considered to have resigned? So, Ed said that if someone misses three meetings, he doesn't think we should consider them resigned?
There are two very important words that you're gonna need to make sure that you take into consideration when addressing the policies. When you say shall, it means that it must be, it has to be done. If you say may, they give you some flexibility. So, if you're talking about the use of the word, I would say that you would wanna be careful about using shall versus may.
So, maybe substitute may. May be considered to have resigned.
May, shall, it's something that we have to consider, and it says clearly here, except for extraordinary circumstances. So, if the person chose to stay on the board, we'd have that choice. But ultimately, it comes down to us on whether or not we're gonna be able to appoint somebody for a board that needs to have a, have a quorum. And, and I think with that there, it gives us a little bit more control over that. I think ultimately, the board has a control over, especially appointed boards, not so much electric boards, I'm sure we don't have any control over that. But even still, it's, it's a part of an important step that we should take, and it gives us a guideline to do that.
Okay. So, we can change the word to may, consider that, and then move on. Approval and posting of minutes, did you have a chance to review that? This is minutes are presented to the board for review at a meeting, following the meeting, and we don't vote... and we don't vote on them until the next meeting, which is what we're doing. Is everybody good with that, how we're doing the minutes now? You get them in your correspondence in one meeting, gives you time to look them over. And then at the next meeting, if you did want to vote changes to them, you could. Okay? The next one, attendance at public meetings by Board of Selectmen. It says that if you want to attend a board meeting, you're supposed to notify in writing or open declaration. It goes on to say the chair retains the right to approve or deny the request, and you have to give us a report after you go. It's fairly complicated to go to another meeting. I was wondering if you would be more open to a paragraph that simply says if you're attending another board or committee meeting, you need to just make it clear that you're there as yourself and not representing the Board of Selectmen. I don't think we need a report back from you because you want to go to a water and sewer meeting or you want to go to a planning board meeting. Unless you feel differently? Does anyone feel differently? I mean, this is very complex, and we have not been following it.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have the ability to go to the meetings just to keep ourselves informed that's happening at the meeting.
Right, so would you be okay with entertaining a more simplified version that simply points out that if you're going, if we vote to send you to a meeting, you're representing us? But if you just go because you're interested, you just need to make it clear that you're there as yourself. That's all.
That would make sense to me.
And then you don't have to go through all these announcements and reports?
Well, the second, the second line there, well, two or more members...
Oh, that is important.
What's that?
That, it would be, we have to change that.
Yeah, yes, because, just because two members are going to go, would like to go to a, another meeting, it's not a violation of the open meeting law. They could go to the meeting, not say a word. And basically, the way this is written is that it would be, would have to be posted at the meeting. But just because two or more, and actually, with the Board of Selectmen now expanded to five members,
It has to be three.
It would be... Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying it needs to change to three. This was written when we had a three-member board. That's, you're right. So is that what you're saying? We change it to three?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
But just because three members are going to go doesn't mean that they're going to say anything. They're going to participate in deliberations that would require an open meeting law violation. There's always the misconception, just because three members of the Board of Selectmen are talking, they could be talking about yesterday's Patriots game, and it's, and it's not an open meeting law violation unless they're talking about something with town business.
So if three of us do attend a meeting, you're saying that we don't need to be posted? Because we've been following the three, like, when we go to the school committee, the town administrator typically posts us in case there's three or more of us. Am I right? Rebecca, on that? You post us when you think three or more of us are going to go to a meeting? Like the school committee, did you post us last year when we went to those budget meetings?
For certain meetings, that's correct.
Okay. But let's say Planning Board was having a hearing on a new development, and three members of our board showed up. Is that a problem?
I wouldn't post it because I wasn't aware. But for a school meeting, like the regional agreement meeting that we're going to be having on November 7th, I would post that the Board of Selectmen were having a meeting on that date, at that time, at that location, even if the board did not take any votes at that point in time.
So should we revise this, leave it, change it? We need it three or more now, but do you want this? It's, it's in our policy. I think it's something you have to think about. Do you want this to stay there or not stay there? Ed, do you want this in the policy or not in the policy?
Well, we could take it under advisement. We should look at this with a full board.
Yep, we can. I'm just making notes of things we might want to consider. Okay, it says also that a selectman cannot request an agenda item be placed on a board or commission meeting unless it is a matter that is deliberated and voted on by the Board of Selectmen. Is that all right? That one's all right with everybody? Move on.
It's hard to say, because I mean, there's a fine line. There's always that perception that the, the selectmen have some sort of authority, and that's why these rules were put in place. But we aren't following them. And as a resident, I certainly would be able to request something to be on a board just like any resident.
Right.
But I think it becomes difficult when you're the selectman because people may assume that you had special treatment. And so this would give us more transparency if it was something that we followed.
Okay, so we'll leave it. And this, I think this is something that, Ed, you brought up during our goals. They had down that we're supposed to meet on 90-day intervals with boards and commissions so that every 120 days, the chairs and members who wish to meet with the Board of Selectmen can meet with us. It's under board and committee invitation to meet with selectmen.
Well, there is a problem with that because an elected, an elected board can't be required to come before the Board of Selectmen. An appointed board, you've got some leeway. But we ran into the problem with that before, that an elected board doesn't have to.
But do you want us to start following this policy and extending invitations to elected and appointed boards as part of our agenda?
Well, it stand, you probably don't even need to put it in because it stands to reason that they don't have to.
But we still can issue invitations. If, if we want this policy, we can keep it or not?
Yeah, I think we should keep it. I think if there's a board that is unable to meet with us or to give us a courtesy report, then we can request it to be on their agenda, and we can either appoint one or more board members to go to their meeting and get the information and bring it back to the board.
Okay, so we leave it? Okay. And Board of Committee use of town council. I think we just need to change the finance director title to the town administrator. And you send the questions via the town administrator through your board chair. Either the board sends it, or the board chair sends it to the town administrator. And this would apply to, I guess, just, no, it's boards and committees, so it's all boards and committees. Does this sound all right to everybody?
Is there any way that we could add employees to that? Town employees? Or is there something separate for them?
I don't know.
Sorry, so add these town employees for what specifically?
Board and committee use of town council.
Would need proper approval from the Board of Selectmen or myself.
Correct. Can we add employees to that, town employees?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we don't give employees the right to contact town council without getting proper approval so that our legal line item stays within reason.
Yes.
So it would read if a, if a board, committee, or town employee, if a board, committee, or one of its members, or a town employee has a question for town council, they are directed to send the question to the town administrator via their committee or board chair? It reads kind of awkwardly right now.
Or department head.
Or department head, yep. Or department head. Does that make sense? So it would come to you, either through a board or committee chair or a department head?
Yes.
Mark, what do you think?
I agree.
Ed?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Oh, we just voted this one in 216, the surplus goods. Unless, Rebecca, you have anything to say about this one? This is getting rid of surplus goods.
I'm not sure which version you had. I do remember that there was some back and forth with the transition in terms of whether or not they could trade in a particular item. And I know that that came up with the COA van as I know that there was some reservation as to the fact that the policy didn't specifically allow for trade-ins, even though it had been common practice throughout the years. So I know that the Board of Selectmen had made that change, and I'm just not sure which version you have. But I don't believe it was ever adequately addressed in the policy.
So would this have a policy in your financial policies?
Not for that, no.
Not for that?
It was something that needed to be done specifically through the Board of Selectmen.
Right, so this still would have to be us?
It would. I just don't recall. I know that it was a time when, when, again, we were back in 2021 over the summer when we were trying to get things finalized, and the van had not gone out for proper procurement. And then I was getting pulled into the mix, so I don't believe it was ever properly updated, although the board did vote to allow for trade-ins as an option under the ABC that's listed on the policy in front of you.
So this says they come directly to us to authorize the disposition of surplus goods and equipment?
Under $20,000 or $10,000.
Less than $10,000. Is that still okay?
Yes, that's legal under the statute.
Okay.
Otherwise, we have to go through a proper auction, et cetera. So if it's valued at under $10,000 but sells for more, that's fine. But we can't just use the disposition of, disposition of surplus goods through the procurement. Anything over $10,000 is a different process.
Okay, so it says if it's over $10,000, then it goes through the procedures of mass general laws?
Yes.
Okay, so that's fine then. And the next one is...
The only thing is, is we do have to have that updated where it does say that it can be traded in.
Oh, where does it say that?
It doesn't. Which is what we ran into the problem with the van for the council and agent.
I thought we voted this to make this thing happen, so... All we do is vote that it's surplus. I don't think we have anything else to do with it, do we?
Well, this here specifies how it can be dissolved, whether it goes through the website and gets put up for an auction 14 days, calendar days prior to any such sale, ministry bid, but it doesn't say that we could trade it in. And that's something that we need for some of the vehicles that we have, especially specialty vehicles.
So we want to add, under the ABC, you want to add D, trade-in?
Yes, and I believe you've already voted to do such. It just wasn't adequately reflected in the policies.
Okay, okay.
Nobody updated them, and I just took the policies that had, were collecting in the folder.
So it's probably in there already?
We'll have to go back to the meeting and watch and see exactly what the vote was.
Okay. Okay. Memberships of boards and commissions by selectmen? Okay, does anybody have an issue with restrictions on this Board of Selectmen joining boards with overlapping jurisdictions? Okay, then that should be fine. And public comment by a resident? We have public comment at every single meeting? What do you think? We need to have a good, strong policy on public comment to make sure that it stays within the parameters of civil comment. Most people do not submit a written request? Do most people notify the chair, or do they notify you?
It depends. Sometimes public comment will come in through an email. Sometimes public comment will be mentioned to the chair, and the chair will say so-and-so needs to make a public comment. Sometimes they'll come up right before a meeting with a piece of paper in their hand and show the chair. There's never really been some consistency with that, at least in my time here.
It just says that they need to notify the chair prior to the start with specific interest for wishing to speak. So does that sound okay to, to everyone here?
Yeah, I think it gives a lot of leeway and for the board to allow or disallow, which is important depending on the, the time that the meeting is needed or...
Okay, so we leave it?
Yep.
Okay. And remote participation policy, that's a new one, so is that one all right still?
Maybe strike the last sentence, first paragraph. It conflicts with the regulations that were passed. Actually, I guess it was just a governor's regulation that during the pandemic, we participated in, in more than five in a year. So that's in conflict with...
Oh, okay.
With the, and that looks like that, that might even be made permanent.
So we can eliminate this? So we can eliminate the sentence, each board, committee, or commission member is permitted to utilize a maximum of five. They can do, they can attend remotely as many times as they want? Yes? Is there a restriction? There's no restriction, right?
No, and I believe that also under the, forgive me, the extension that the governor had signed in terms of public participation and hybrid participation, that had been extended yet again, allowing for more than a certain amount of individuals to participate remotely.
Okay, lists only five reasons for remote participation. Do we need to have reasons, or can we just eliminate that?
Currently, under the extension of the open meeting law, remote participation, you do not need to have those reasons in play. So I don't think that they're relevant at this particular point in time, unless the board feels as though they cannot conduct their business with members participating remotely. I don't think it would be problematic.
So we could remove this? That you have to have a reason, you can just say you need to meet remotely, it could be your own reason?
I mean, I think that the reason that that was in there to begin with, to be honest with you, is that before COVID and before the pandemic, a lot of times trying to have people participate via phone or through Zoom wasn't as popular, there wasn't a lot of virtual participation mechanisms in place, and that all really kind of changed dramatically once the pandemic came into play. So I think that the way that we've been able to adjust has allowed for remote participation to be a lot easier and convenient at times if people are traveling, or sickness, or childcare issues, et cetera. So that might help the board boost a lot of their involvement with some of the participation of members that could potentially participate, but they just can't physically be here at that point in time. So I think that when this policy was created, it did not take into consideration the advances that we've made in the recent years.
Okay. Under the new restrictions, do they have to have a quorum of the board present in body still?
Currently, that has been waived. I believe it's until 2024 and sometime, or 2025. I forget the exact date, but I know that it was something that had been extended yet again as they decide exactly how best to go about that, being the state legislature and the governor.
Okay, so the statement, "The selectmen emphasize pursuant to the requirements of the remote participation by the Attorney General," that's not valid?
Under the current extension.
Right. So can we remove that?
So the option for public bodies in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to hold public meetings remotely or in a hybrid fashion, which came into play at the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, has been extended by the General Court for another two years until March 31, 2025. So as of right now, you still have that option under Massachusetts general law and the extension of that law.
So we need to substitute that language, right?
And I believe, like we said, that the legislature is exploring how that has boosted participation and has become a lot easier, but also take into consideration the restraints such as monies for software and, you know, Zoom and Teams and all that other stuff. So I wouldn't say that 100% that's guaranteed that they won't change it, but it sounds like they're exploring more of that in the future.
Okay. So can the chair be remote? The chairman of the meeting can be remote as well?
Right now, under the law, it doesn't distinguish with the extension.
Okay, so we might need to work on the language in this. This is long. There's a lot in this one.
Perhaps eliminate the last paragraph, too. That's in conflict.
The Board of Selectmen reserves the right to revoke the Town Board? Yeah, okay, strike that. Visitor Code of Conduct? Seems straightforward. Good?
Good.
Good.
Right now, it just states for visitors. As part of the new rewrite with the Personnel Bylaw and Personnel Policies, I'd like to do more in terms of employees and the way that they talk to one another and the treatment and the environment here in Town Hall, but that's more specific to the employees.
So that wouldn't be in this policy? Okay. Okay, so we'll leave this one alone. Okay, I think that's it for what we have right now. We're back on the agenda, unless anybody else has anything else on the policies? No? All right. We're not taking, oh, we are under the appointments. Okay, approval of minutes for August 14th. Have anyone reviewed those that were distributed last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the Selectmen meeting minutes from August 14th, 2023.
Second up.
Any discussion?
Look to be in order.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
And the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from September 11th, 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve the Selectmen meeting minutes from September 11th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, and that concludes approval of the minutes. Appointments of the board. We have a resignation from Susan D'Angelo from the Cultural Council effective October 23rd, 2023. You need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Susan D'Angelo from the Cultural Council effective October 23rd, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you for the 10 years that you were on that Council.
I echo that. She was there a long time. All in favor? Okay. I need a motion to appoint Larry Alardo of Mill Street of Groveland to the Cultural Council for October 24th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to appoint Larry Alarado of Mill Street of Groveland to the Cultural Council for October 24th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? There be none? All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you to Larry Alardo for stepping up. It's now Town Administrator time.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of items. One, to let the board know that GMLD, the Municipal Light Department, and the town received a grant for electric charging stations here in town. So there'll be three locations that we will be seeing these pop up. One of them is at the Pines Recreation Area, the other is at 23 School Street in the Municipal Lot, and the other will be at the Groveland Municipal Light Department Building on Salem Street. I wanted to give Kevin Snow a big shout out for making this happen. It was something that was brought to our attention by a couple of residents, and we were able to work together, and now here we are. Another thank you to all those that participated with Pumpkin Fest. It was a huge success. There was more attendance this year than there had been in prior years. I wanted to send a special thank you out to Bill and Teresa Dunn, Steve Collins, and Sarah Sheehan McGrath. That was the core planning group, and they really helped hold all of the resource together and make things happen. We wanted to thank all of our vendors and those that were helpful with setup and breakdown, specifically Steve McPherson, Chief Valentine, Annie Schindler, and the Fire Department. And we also wanted to thank our volunteers that had participated, such as Selectmen Watson and Selectmen Parento, and the Groveland Police Department, as well as the library. So there was a lot of takeaways from the event and a lot of things that we can improve upon, but it definitely showed to be an event that people were excited about and wanted to be at, and we were really excited to be able to put it on. So we wanted to thank everybody and see you next year. The last thing I just wanted to bring up was that, I know that you have heard that the Woodyer School Project is coming down the pipeline. We have a public meeting with the Woodyer School Superintendent at the Langley Adams Library on November 18th from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. This project is going to be a, or have a major impact on the town and its finances, regardless of what fashion that it goes in, and it's something that I would like to hopefully have the chair add to the agenda for our meeting on November 20th, which will give residents and members an opportunity to listen and hear directly from the superintendent and exactly what they're proposing and why it is that they're proposing that, but something that I really do think that the Board of Selectmen needs to be mindful of and be involved in as much as possible. And then, again, the last item I have is that I have been on utter overload, so my door is closed a lot of the times, but I am trying my best to be available, as I usually am with my open-door policy, but if the Board of Selectmen needs me for anything, please let me know, but I will be hiding in my office for the next few weeks.
Thank you. Just, I think I've stated before, I am an employee of Woodyer Regional High School, so I will be recusing myself from any and all discussions of the building project. And I didn't know if you had access to those photographs of Pumpkin Fest to show on the screen? Those were so pretty. Are they on? Do we already have film going up on television already? We do, right?
So it's on Facebook, Instagram, and I know that the Cable Department had taken videos, and I also know that it's on our website.
I personally felt that was amazing, really well done, and thanks to Mark and Ed for adding to the excitement. Lots of smiles. It's good to see. Selectmen's time and reports, Ed?
Nothing.
Mark?
I'm good.
No more movies?
No. Well, I think this coming summer, we might have to have a, you know, maybe once every couple months, we'll do a movie out front again.
That'd be fun.
Now that I gotta kind of master that, so.
Great. And Jason?
I'm good, thank you.
I don't think I have anything, either old or unfinished business. Ed?
Nothing.
Mark?
Good.
Jason?
Nothing.
Items not reasonably anticipated at time of post-aid.
So I do have one item that was brought to my attention. A resident had reached out to me specifically about a yard sale permit. I guess in prior years, there's been some confusion as to where that responsibility lies. I'm not sure if there's a board member that has more history on that matter. I think that a couple of individuals have received yard sale permits through the Clerk's Office, but then it was found that the bylaw specifically states that the Board of Selectmen approve yard sale permits. This is a little bit of an inconvenience for residents, especially where the board only meets every two months. When we're talking about a yard sale on a private residence, just one resident, one day, there might be a way for us to explore having administrative capabilities through either myself or another designated individual to allow for them to partake in those activities. I can understand where, if it's something more of like a town-wide yard sale, that the Board of Selectmen might want to have more of a detailed conversation, but where it's an individual homeowner, trying to get them to get the information prior to a meeting, getting it on the agenda, getting them before here, just to have a simple yard sale for a couple of hours in their front yard, seems a bit excessive, and I would like to see whether or not the Board of Selectmen would allow me the right to, again, either myself or another department, to administratively approve that moving forward and request that that be on the next agenda for a more detailed discussion.
I'm agree to that.
Consensus-wise, nobody has a real big problem. Okay, and we'll get it on to the next agenda then. And we don't charge for the permits either, so it's just a formality. Okay, and that concludes our meeting. Does anyone want to make a, oh, we have a correspondence, the invitation from Kentucky Regional School District for the November 7th State of the District and Regional School Agreement Meeting? Sounds like a big one.
And then the only other item that came in that you'll see was, aside from your packet, that wasn't included in the electronic packet, was the letter that was assembled by the Massachusetts Association of Select Boards. So that is the final letter that was submitted to the Lieutenant Governor and the Governor, and you'll see that our comments are included in some capacity, whether or not they were combined with somebody else's, but overall, they hurt our concerns and they included them in the letter.
Good.
And we also got a correspondence from the American Legion for the Veterans Day Services, which will be held on Friday, November 10th at 10:30.
Friday, November 10th, 10:30 at the fire station?
That's correct.
Central? Okay.
Probably.
Yeah. All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:15.
Second.
All in favor?